Hi Dan.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
That wasn't very convincing, you know.
Yes, still tired but getting better. Hey Bruce, different background tonight.
Yeah, um, because Sig teaches Tuesday and Thursday. We have limited wifi over there and I kicked her out of her class on Tuesday night, so she kicked me out of the house tonight, so. So I'm in my house tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tough when there's limited wifi and you're both trying to use it.
Yeah, and she's got DSL over there and we tried to do something different. But.
Well goodness, look at the, look at the backgrounds everyone's got.
I was gonna say, how's the wifi in Versailles Jackie?
Uh, excuse me, this is not a background, this is my humble, humble abode.
Did Lisa Candido come over and vacuum before?
Yeah, she did, she did.
And Trevor, you know, you are out of this world, so.
Like I say, I'm a star man.
You're our star Trevor.
Don't make me start singing David Bowie, I'll do it. I'm a star man. Like this, you want this? I don't think you want this, I don't want this, so, there you go.
It's funny to watch your ears or your headphones come and go.
Yeah, I know that's probably irritating, but, sorry.
No more than COVID, so, you know. Less than COVID, less irritating than COVID.
Yeah, if only that was just, just irritating, right?
Were you able to do anything on your policy subcommittee?
Um, approve the minutes.
Okay.
I mean, we're efficient, but we couldn't eat, it wasn't even enough time to dive in, so we'll just move them to the next meeting. And nothing is necessary soon, so.
Right, so. I had run into some complications getting in even for your meeting, it asked for all kinds of verifications, I had to like
Oh wow.
birds and I have no idea, it's all crazy and new to me. And then when it was all done, it said that my browser wouldn't do anything for Zoom. But then I hit something and then it went on, I have no idea.
Oh my god.
It's every time I do this, it's different, I don't, I feel like I try to do the same thing and it's different every time. But that's okay, we did it.
We did it. And because, you know, usually I can text Pam if there's a problem when it's Google Meet because she's the organizer. But, we figured it out, or we will eventually.
Right, so Jen Malcolm Brown, are you there? Okay, yeah, can I switch the host over to you so that if I'm going through stuff and you see people need to be admitted, sometimes it's hard to do both, so I'll try doing that. Did that work? Alright. So there are at least three of us here, I can't tell if anyone else is.
There's Steve.
Oh, Steve is here too, good.
Yeah. Katie cannot be here tonight.
Okay. So the meeting opens? 7:04 I guess?
Yep.
Any public hearings? Suzie?
Hi there. As liaison for the FinCom, I had a couple of questions that came up and a couple of statements. One is I asked about the progress on the school roof and as you know, the state turned down the other projects. And so Becky got money to go to FurCog and get some engineering support. So that piece is moving forward, so it feels not like just trying the same thing over and over. And we were wondering if you had any idea when you might start working on the FY22 budget? Just so we had a sense of how that's coming down, to not on this particular agenda, but you might have had a plan. And then the third, and the third thing was asking if you had a, if you were working on the policy for school choice? If that was getting developed? Three things.
Okay, so I believe that it is not on the agenda specifically to look at the preliminary draft. But if I'm not mistaken, I think that the Director of Finance and Operations may be presenting a draft this evening. Okay, as far as the policy on school choice, I'm not sure what you mean by that?
Because we do have a current policy per Desi guidance.
Are you talking about whether we accept school choice?
Um. No, I know that there, there is some school choice going on, I just didn't know if that was being examined? Or if, if, or if it's a settled issue.
We have to vote on that every year, right Dan?
We vote on it every year and every year we take everything into consideration. Jackie looks at, you know, all aspects, the school committee discusses it. And then we usually have the vote the following week, meaning so that we have ample time to, you know, digest all of that information before we vote on it.
And is that, does that fall in a certain time in the calendar?
It does, and I'm looking at the perpetual now.
We have to let Desi know by June 1st, Dan, so when do we start discussing, is it April?
April and May, yeah, it's April.
April and then we vote in May?
April, yeah, discussion of school choices in April and then it looks like.
The vote is in May because we have to let Desi know by June 1st.
Yep, it's at the May meeting. This is why we have the perpetual calendar. So thank you Suzie, you're asking very good questions.
Okay.
And we're thankful we have Dan the keeper of the calendar. If he ever leaves us, he'll have to bequeath that to someone.
So the policy is in the, and I would find that policy at the elementary school or at the union office?
All the policies are listed on our website online and can be referenced by the public.
Okay.
We've made it really easy for, easy access for everybody and also eliminating the costliness and waste of paper.
Yeah.
And especially now that Chutesbury has high-speed internet. And now with COVID, I think we have all learned that that is a very efficient way of accessing information. So I'm very happy that we've done that.
Thank you.
Anything else from you Suzie?
Uh, no, thanks.
We're happy to have you here. Alright, so the next item on the agenda Suzie is review of our annual agenda and perpetual calendar. And the two things I wanted to mention was that this evening, we would be, the Director of Finance and Operations would be presenting our first initial draft budget. Suzie beat me to the punch. And looking at the perpetual calendar. I was happy to see by reviewing it that we're pretty much on target, even with everything with COVID. So it is nice to see that things continue to move. For the month of November is the initial budget discussion for the upcoming year. Ongoing work with the school improvement plan, the four-town budget meeting, which we know is coming up. And then the union budget presentation and discussion. Okay? So I think we're all good with that. That said, any warrants and gifts?
Warrants, yes, gifts, I'm not aware of.
I'm waiting. Thank you Jackie.
I, Stephen Sullivan, is authorized by my signature, the payment of payroll warrant number 309 in the amount of seventy-one thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. I also signed payroll warrant number 310 for sixty-seven thousand, three eighty-two and ninety-five cents. And payroll warrant number 311 for seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and five cents. And we have accounts payable number 3010 from 10/19/2020 in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. With a hundred and twenty-five of that being encumbered from fiscal year 2020. We have warrant number 3011 in the amount of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. Whoa, that, and this one has three thousand, eighty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents from the CARES Act. And number 3012 in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and twelve cents with five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents from the CARES Act. That's it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for providing us with all of that information. And we appreciate the fact that you go to Town Hall and sign all of these warrants, so thank you.
And Trevor has a copy.
I know Trevor's always one step ahead of us.
Only because Steve sends it to me, so.
Steve, thank you, you're awesome. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from October 22nd, 2020?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Alright, any revisions to the minutes? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Jen, did you say yes?
Aye.
Okay, alright. That is a modified roll call vote, just so you know, okay? Next, we're looking for a motion for approval of the minutes from November 2nd, 2020. Lauren?
Uh, I move that we accept the minutes from November, whatever date you just did.
Yeah.
And I can second.
Alright, any amendments to the minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, any unfinished business related to or updates on the 2020 reopening?
Well, I have a little bit of an update in terms of some preliminary things coming out of the survey for the preschool to second grade, but I was gonna do that during my principal's report.
Okay, we can do that then. Jennifer, anything on your end? You're muted.
Sorry about that, I had a little bit of a, a report from my conferences with the commissioner, but I was gonna do that in the superintendent's report, if that's okay?
That's alright. Alright, so why don't we move along? Any new business items to discuss? Anything happening or going on that perhaps the school committee's not aware of and you'd like to mention? Oh, that's good too, alright. And I will say, you know, my screen only sees nine people, so if there, Jennifer, if there's anyone below there, that line, with a hand up or something, you let us know, okay?
Yep, there are ten of us total.
Okay, thank you. So Jennifer, now you can come back to that report you were talking about.
Here I am, so across Union 28, all of our schools are in different phases. This week Irving brought all grades K to six in, in their phase-in hybrid model for half-day in-person and half-day remote. Leverett has phased in grades K1 and 2 for half-day in-person. And Swift River plans to return to the in-person hybrid model in January, date to be determined. We're still having discussions at the New Salem Wendell School Committee. Governor Baker has been making some recommendations for Massachusetts schools. His recommendation is that schools should be closed only as a last resort when there is evidence of transmission or in communities where COVID positivity rates are high. They overhaul the metrics used to determine the coronavirus transmission risks for each community. And this actually, this new methodology does take into consideration a community's population, which it did not in prior metrics.
Right.
It really previously only looked cases per 100,000 residents and none of our Union 28 towns come even close. The commissioner wouldn't commit to penalizing school districts that choose to remain in remote only when public health data doesn't seem to support the evidence. He will evaluate each school district on a case-by-case basis. And so far, the state has looked at two public school districts within Massachusetts over timelines. The leadership team has been meeting with the school nurses. We've had conversations about lunch service and the safety risks, risk mitigation, and issues if students return to school full day and are eating lunch maskless, which is a concern, it's a higher-risk time for students. Bruce and Pam helped orchestrate our move, so we are all settled in in our new spots. Pam and I are at Swift River, I still am remote until I get cleared. Bruce and Megan and Emily are at Irving Elementary and they have some wonderful new furniture that Bruce managed to, to get from, I think I donated from a bank, Bruce can probably give more detail. And Jen Spofford for Special Education is over at Chutesbury and she texted me the other day, what a beautiful ride she has on 202 and she pulled over in New Salem, there's a beautiful outlook there and sent a picture. So she's loving her commute and says everyone at Chutesbury Elementary is so friendly, so she's happy to be in her new home. And today we had another meeting with Commissioner Riley. They may be updating some bus guidance over the next few weeks. The Department of Public Health recently updated their quarantine recommendations, which I can share with the committee tomorrow in a link, it came today, this, later this afternoon. And the CDC has recently sort of pulled back their original recommendation about schools and are now saying that schools can be a place of transmission. So I know that the department is looking at the CDC guidance and be, it's reviewing it. And lastly, I did send out a note to staff and families asking them to think about low-risk ways to celebrate the Thanksgiving holiday and other holidays. And I did share that with the committees as well. So that's my update from Union 28.
Thank you, and Swift River, it sounds like they're going to have that rapid testing, is it, is like some sort of a experiment?
They're not doing the binax one that the state had put out, there was just like six requirements that they had to meet. It was just too difficult for our small schools. But they are, part of their MOA was looking at ways to get testing available. And the other piece of the binax that Desi is helping to orchestrate, it really is only for symptomatic students and staff. So it's not sort of testing ahead of time.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update, very.
You're welcome.
Alright Bruce, Director of Finance and Operations.
So as Jen mentioned, last week was moving week. And everybody's settled in very well and we're all appreciative of being in the school buildings. As Jen mentioned, we got, I was able to get some cubicle dividers donated to us. East Hampton Savings bought out Bank of America building over in Greenfield and they had some stuff in it and they said, take whatever we want, so. Worked out very well, so I've got some, some spare cubicles if somebody needs them also. We got four and we're using one, so, but it's, everybody's happy and I think it's worked out very well. And I gotta commend all the, all the office staff that we really, they pitched in and boxed things up and moving went very smoothly and I'm very impressed, so. The other thing is, is, and we'll talk about it further, but at our meeting on Monday, with the joint supervisory, they did approve the U28 budget, so we're moving forward with that. And if you want to talk about it tonight, I have prepared for us a budget with a 1.59% increase. And we can talk it through if you'd like, or we can, I know the town is anxious to see a version of it, so.
Yeah, I think it might be good, especially because the town is anxious to at least, you know, we can talk about it a little bit. We're not voting on it tonight, so we can certainly review it and we can get a copy to the town. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, if you're alright, I'm gonna share my screen and hopefully I can share my screen.
Thank you.
Bruce, hopefully it doesn't flash like it did on Monday's meeting. Was it Monday?
The host is disabled, the host has disabled the participant screen sharing, so if the host can help me out.
Jen, Jen gave you the one-second finger.
Yeah, you're good.
Jackie, you've now moved from Oz to the tropics?
Oh yes, I like to time travel and transport myself all around the world during these meetings.
I was happy when you landed in Oz.
Okay. So this being our first draft of our FY22 budget. And these are the major drivers, as you can see, instruction is the biggest increase and that's all, basically all salaries and the administration is salaries and basically the other school services also.
Bruce, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
And I just want to ask this question because I think, I just want to make sure there's clarity, especially for the Finance Committee to understand the administration number, is that, that does not include the Union 28, is that right?
No, that, the administration is, for the most part, all Union 28.
Okay, so that increase reflects the fact that the Union 28 budget did actually go down. However, the the number of students in Chutesbury is higher.
It's only up a little bit, but that, that also reflects, because that is just the administration, it's mostly Jen, the superintendent's office and my office and all our associated costs. And there's some increases in there. But, you know, and I did budget, I probably over-budgeted for a salary increase for next year. But I'm thinking we're better off budgeting a little high because there are negotiations and hopefully we won't use all that, so. And hopefully, as we go along, we will have a better picture of where negotiations are going, so.
Okay.
And, oh.
Once again, we've been extremely thoughtful around what we're asking for and once again, coming in under not even 2% and.
Yeah, most of, most of the administration as we're looking at now is small increases, mostly salary. When this is all salaries and, you know, we're leaning at small numbers because last year I actually budgeted for 2% increase for teacher salaries and the negotiations came in at one and a half, so there's literally some money flowing from last year's budget into this year's budget to help make this, that's why the salary implications look better than they would normally. So that's where that is, anybody have any questions? The other school service is just the nurse. And I try to bump up the food service every year just to keep a little bit ahead of that, we subsidize the food service. And actually, the food service program in Chutesbury does very well. But, you know, we're not sure where things are gonna go. And, and I'd just like to keep, keep up with that just a little bit. And then the plant and operation, you will see, especially down at the lower side of this, the central office custodian has been, we will no longer have a custodian and the building maintenance will no longer be needed. And there's a couple of other reductions there, so. And the biggest one in the fixed charges is your portion of the office rent. As we're no longer renting an office, that's an eighteen-hundred-dollar reduction. And we end up at a plus thirty-seven or 1.59%. And and we'll move to all in page here. And just, you know, we've, we've looked at all the, so there's a couple of things that are going on in, on the offsets to the budget and I'd like to talk about a little bit. Jackie and I, we're level funding the grants, I think that's a fair assumption right now. We only have like three grants that we get any kind of money, some significant money in there. Federal grants, the REAP grant is a federal grant, special education 240 grant is a, is a federal grant and the Title I is federal money. The Early Childhood Revolving Fund, this year, of course, is out the window, we're not collecting any money there. And Jackie and I discussed this for next year and, and really, to be on the conservative side, have reduced that number just to, just to, just to be on the safe side. This is, uh, these are the children, it's, it's kind of a pay-as-you-go program for some children and some are on a sliding scale, I believe, Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong.
Some are on the sliding scale and some are free if they receive services.
They require services, so this is an estimate that we think is workable. And last year, in this year's current budget, we moved what we had in hand in rural aid that allowed us to transfer it into the next year. So we have thirty thousand dollars there. I'm not convinced that we're gonna have rural aid next year because they're not going to include it in the FY21 budget. However, FY22 may However, FY twenty two may change. On the other hand, if you recall, last year, the school committee voted that if we didn't get rural aid, they'd use school choice money to cover that. And that's something I'd like to ask that we think about for this year. Right now, we have a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in the school choice fund. And the, from my understanding from Becky is the, the finance committee is getting a little anxious about having that kind of money sitting around. So that's just my thoughts. I think 1.5% or 1.6% is a pretty good starting point. I think it's a very good starting point, to be honest with you. I think it's really responsible on our part. Like to hear what other people have to say. And then, if you want, we can just look at, this is how you, you twenty eight is falling out this year. Come on. So for, you know, come on. Schutzbury, the last column over, I think it is.
Nope, New Salem Wendell is.
Okay, so for Schutzbury, Schutzbury actually has got a small increase of two thousand dollars this year. So all things considered, very, very minor changes in the U twenty eight budget. So.
And Schutzbury has the smallest allocation relative to the rest of the towns. Is that correct, Bruce?
Yes.
We also had by far the most homeschool applications this year.
Yes, you did.
So, well, that's where we're at. I think it's a really, really, really good place to start. And, you know, it's a lot of level funding. There's a couple of yeah, nothing.
Okay, so let's open it up. Does anyone need to see the budget on the screen anymore, or can we go to seeing everybody? Okay, let's, let's get it back to where we can see everybody.
Now, this is my magic. Somehow I've got to.
Are you just click?
Stop here. There we go. Getting better at it.
So I'll say, you know, as an initial budget, it looks very good. Suzie, if you can take from that a few things, as Bruce mentioned, this is a year of contract negotiations. So sort of some of that is built into that budget. There was a reduction overall in the Union twenty eight budget, but our allocation is a little bit more. Yep.
Um, what is the enrollment? Is there an increased enrollment, you said? Schutzbury?
Well, I think we have a higher number. Is that how it works?
We have a higher number. And actually, if it wasn't COVID, we would be in the one thirties, upper one thirties. But because of COVID, and all of the homeschool, I don't actually know the exact number right now. I think it's like one. I don't know.
So, so the point, Suzie, though, I think I'm trying to make is that, you know, the Union twenty eight budget is less than it was last year. But proportionately, we're paying a little bit more this year, and that's based upon the number of students. So that's one of those crap shoots. We just never know who's going to have more students.
It was up and down a lot. So.
Right.
So it's the Schutzbury population didn't necessarily increase. Among all the students across the Union, we are having a higher percent of the population.
Right.
Not only needs to be a couple of students in it, and it
Right.
creates a difference.
Okay. School committee members, anyone have any comments, thoughts, suggestions, ideas? I'm just thinking, you know, moving forward now that the Union twenty eight central office is now housed in the schools. You know, I'm just wondering some things we may be able to change, like, I mean, if you have copiers and things like that, you know, shared use, that kind of stuff. I mean, I'm sure you're all doing that kind of stuff anyhow. But, and Bruce, I appreciate getting the free furniture and cubicles.
No, that was just lucky, I'll tell you. But sometimes just making a phone call makes a big difference. So.
And I also want to thank everybody involved with not only the move, but the idea to move into the schools. That was really a phenomenal alternative. I personally was really stressing out about where the central office would be located, what it was going to cost, more importantly. And I really think that this solution was a win-win. It's a reduction in costs, and it does bring administration closer to the students. So I just think it was a really awesome idea. Lauren?
Just to add to that idea, it was Jennifer's genius. And, but I think we also need to thank all of the central office staff that was flexible enough to, to be willing to make that, that change to support, to support that idea.
Thank you for saying that, Lauren, that the staff right away, when I proposed it, was like, okay, how do we make it work? And on top of that, the central office staff also declined to raise this year. So, you know, they've been super flexible and really wonderful in trying to help out our schools this year when we didn't know what was going to happen. So we have a great group over there. Bruce? There's a great group over there.
I, I, I second that. They all pitched in and started boxing stuff up. And when we were ready to move, we were ready to move. We had a mover come in, and everything was out of there in the morning. And by the end of the afternoon, they had everything where it needed to be. So.
Great. Thank you.
And Pam did double duty because she packed me up. So yay, Pam.
She's always doing double duty.
She is.
All right, Bruce, did you have more to report on this evening?
No, that's it. I'm just wondering, I know the finance committee is interested in seeing this. Would you like me to forward it on at least our rough draft of our budget here so they can? If that's okay with the school committee, I'd like to just.
Thank you.
Okay.
And as far as, I think you also sent us a sort of report of where we are. I mean, is that right? In that packet, sort of expenditures?
Yep, yep, yep.
Everything on target, anything we should be worried about or careful?
Yeah, we're, we're doing good. Like I say, our, thanks to the negotiating team, we came in a little less than I budgeted for. So there's my recollection of my eighteen thousand dollars to the good. Plus, we have got some pretty good resources for COVID relief. So and the town has been really gracious in helping us defray some of our COVID costs also. So we've, we, we've having, we're having an okay year this year. Other than the fact that we're not collecting any
Money wise.
Money.
Money wise, we're doing it, we're having an okay year.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Money wise, because all of us are just about pulling our hair out with everything else that's going on. So.
And I guess that we have Suzie here, I guess I would just want to make sure that you're aware that the school committee is very anxious for some sort of remedy to the leaking roof.
Yes, I spoke to the committee to remind them of that, but it's not for lack of wanting. Anywhere. Let's just.
That's all we want.
Let's just hope the state figures this out and that our proposal gets accepted.
Okay, thank you.
I know both Jen and I have been really disappointed with the results we've got from the MSBA regarding Schutzbury School.
You see, has there been talk about, though, like, we've always talked about a, a Plan B? Because now it's, you know, I think Steve said it's been since like 2005 or whatever. But I just can talk from two thou, from, from when I started, which was 2014. And it's, is there a Plan B? Like, if we're not approved, are we going to, going to continue to like, continue to let it leak, or are we gonna try something else?
Yeah, I think that's, I think Becky's working on a, a design professional to get started.
And Steve's got his hand laid. What, what do you have to report?
Yes, that we had, a Plan B is actually like Plan A two, where, where you're working with the fur cog, and we're looking at it as just a town thing. We're not, not even looking at the SBA that we can, of course, we should apply for that again in January when it comes around. But we're looking at doing it just as a straight up town now.
Okay, good. Needs to get it done.
But that's still like millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Needs to get done. I think, you know, if, whatever it's going to cost now, I mean, some, somehow, whatever has to happen, has to happen. It has to get done. Because the only thing that's going to happen, the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost to do other mitigations. And, and, you know, God forbid that, that there starts to get mold or something like that in that building, we are going to have a real problem. So. We, we can pay a bill now or more later.
Yeah, I was talking with Matt, and he's, he's getting concerned about the wall between the gym and the, the kitchen. The wall is beginning to get in there. So.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. So when, when, when the MSBA thing opens up, I'm, I'm, we'll, we'll be in touch with our local representatives and see if we can get, get a little arm twisting down there. Because
Yeah.
this is, this is getting a little frustrating.
Yeah. All right. We won't, we won't beat you up, Suzie, anymore. That's enough for tonight. Okay. Principals report.
Uh, so I feel like we've been in a lot of communication about what's going on. So I don't feel like this needs to be very long, but I did have a meeting last night specifically geared towards the younger grades, reviewing our plan and answering any questions. And the nurse also was with me, tried to answer any questions that people may have. And this morning, I sent out our survey to the younger grades to get their decision on what they hope their children are going to be doing on December seventh, which is supposedly our start date for hybrid for preschool through second grade. And currently, I can just tell you some of the initial numbers. So in kindergarten, currently, we have seven voting hybrid, one remote, and three unanswered. In first grade, nine and a half, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Nine and a half hybrid, three and a half remote, and seven still unanswered. And in second grade, six hybrid, two remote, and four still unanswered. So when I look at the pie graph on my Google form, it's about a seventy thirty split right now. And of, about who answered. And so we shall see what happens tomorrow. We're going to send a reminder, and then on next Monday is when we start individually calling or emailing families, trying to get their answer. Currently, no one is asking for bus transportation. But we still have several, several, obviously, you heard people that haven't answered yet. So no matter what, it's going to be very low, which is great for us because that presents a whole other health and safety component. And we've gotten a lot of great feedback on our plan in terms of how comprehensive it is. A lot of people are thinking it's pretty thoughtful, and.
I believe the words were thoughtful and thorough, Principal Mendoza. So.
Thoughtful and thorough.
Nice job.
And, yeah, and so that's, that's how, what we're doing. We have decided, this you don't know, unless you came to the meeting last night, which I think Steve did, and that might have been it. That we did decide that we to street livestream teacher instruction. And that's how we're kind of going about being able to teach remote and in person. And so we purchased some cameras with good sound and good angles. And the teachers will be deliver, the, they'll will be streaming the instruction as the teacher teaches it because we are not in our normal Schutzbury configuration. Kids are in desks, and the teacher is at the board. And so it is, we are able to do this because of that. And, you know, the teacher's going to teach both sets of children. The, the para in the room is going to be able to monitor the chat and monitor the online piece during that component. And then what will happen is when there's a work period, there'll be a work period for the kids at home and the kids in the, in the classroom. We, we can even partner the kids because the kids are bringing their device. So we can still partner kids that are at home and at school together to work together. That's still able to be done. And when the children are going outside, either, you know, we have breaks for the kids anyway in hybrid. So they'll have a break and/or we have purchased some really high quality tech ed components, ed tech components, so that the kids at home might have some time on that. Or another staff member in the building might take over and do some things with, with the kids on hybrid at home while the other children are outside. So that is how we're attempting to do it. And we, I have been very clear, it's not going to be perfect, especially to begin with, and that we're really considering those two and a half weeks in December to be our trial to work things out, including what, what feels good in terms of a schedule, in terms of amount of time in and out, and all of that. So just another shout out to the teachers and the staff at the school for being truly amazing and very grateful for everybody to do that, doing that. Yes, Lauren?
Do you think that families understand that there will still be some reliance on technology? You know, even while they're at school because of?
Yes, I, I mean, well, if they came to the meeting last night, they heard me say what I just said. But also, on the, on the survey, not only do I say, like, I, I think you guys got it. So I don't know if you looked at the survey, but not only do I say, like, do you want, what do you want? Do you need busing? But then I also threw in some of the things that I thought were really important that I wanted to drive home, which was, are you aware your kid needs a flu shot before December thirtieth? Are you aware that we're expecting that you're not going to travel or gather? And if you do travel or gather, your kid has to stay home for fourteen days remotely or show us proof of a negative COVID test. And I have in there, you need to bring your charge device to school every day. So that's again, another reminder, oh, and that you have to do the symptom checklist. I had that in there too. It's just another reminder that you are bringing your device because there, they may be, there may be times where they're going to use it still at school. For example, I know the second grade teacher uses Jamboard a lot, and I don't know how many of you understand what Jamboard is, but it's basically like a class Google slide where they can all be doing something at the same time and seeing what each other is doing. And so she might be teaching a math lesson. And then the, the work might be a Jamboard where the kids at home and the kids in school are all showing their learning together. The teacher's monitoring the kids in the class and talking with them in person, and they're experiencing the instruction in person. But all the kids are participating in the same activity. So she might use that. And so we're not going to be having them on like IXL while they're in school. But they may be participating in a group work activity or like a, a classwork activity that might be interactive, and you might need it. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else to report, Jackie?
Nope.
Boilers are working?
Oh, yeah, no, we, we caught, we are having a lot of issues. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, it's not necessarily one thing and one thing specifically, but we've had to have Gemrock in three times already since we've had, since we turned the heaters on near the end of December, of December, of October. So it's everything from like just starting up to the, the water flooding issue that we continue. To the, the water flooding issue that we continue to have in the tank. Uh, to, to something else that didn't start on Monday. I don't even know exactly what that is. But um, but we are continuing to have constant. I mean, I, they're, they're old, so I think they're gonna need to be serviced, as Bruce said. Uh, they're running fine when they're running. It's just, there's continually stuff that's happening.
And Stephen, has that been like reported to you and the Buildings Committee? Like, are you on top of this?
No, I was, I was only aware of the first issue. I haven't heard that it's a continuing thing.
Right, it's in its difference, and it's a different continuing thing. And the thing that's tricky is, if you remember. You remember a few years ago, I had this on our capital planning's thing. And we actually had it on the MSBA whatever list. But then the people were, people, not me, were saying things like, it's, we really don't need it. And actually, Gemrock said, we actually don't need it, and it's not actually this, and it's not actually that. And so everyone, again, had their say in something and it got taken off. But um, so.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Can you maybe forward some of these concerns or, or when you have an issue to the Buildings Committee and bring it?
Here's the thing, Dan, I'm, I'm not getting into what happened last year again. So what hap- and I refuse to do that. So um, so what happens usually is it's reported to me and Becky. And then from there, Becky will either inform people or we'll make the decision together to do that. And sometimes, uh, and if we remember, we, we put Steve on there. I have no problem putting Steve on an email. Um, but, but the thing is, what's not, what I don't want to happen is like what happened last year. Where all of these other people are trying to come in and make random decisions and tell us what to do. And then Matt's told by like fifty people what to do. And I'm just, I'm not doing that. So um, Becky is always in the loop, Matt always CCs her. Um, and most of the time, Jessica and Matt try to CC Steve as much as they remember um, on a lot of things. So that's kind of how it's been working.
Okay.
And then if it's a big thing, like I did, I let you know.
Right.
Uh, the committee know if I feel like it's gonna be something that's gonna be expensive.
Well, since we know that there's an issue with these boilers, and we know that there's an issue with this communication. I'm wondering if you could at least notify Steve, Stephen, just because he is on the school committee. But also he can make sure that he's representing what's going on with them, with the Buildings Committee. So not the Buildings Committee, you don't need to send to the Buildings Committee, but maybe sending it to Stephen. Just as things come up.
And we all, we usually try to, but I will remind people to do that again.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Just trying to help. Okay. Was there anything else?
Nope. I think that's good for me.
Alright, Stephen, Amherst Pelham?
I'll try, I'll keep this short. The big things were that we approved the two girls to play on the Pope Francis Girls Hockey Team. As a co-op. And we'll vote on the rest of the winter sports, probably in December sometime. When we get more word from the MIAA. Um, the budget for the region that we're speak, that's being talked about on that December fifth meeting. You know, it's, we talked about a little, little bit Tuesday night at our meeting. And talking about it being level funded actually means giant cuts. So that's what, that's what we're looking at as far as the budget at the region is, big cuts. Um, I'm on the JLMSC, the Joint Labor Management Safety Committee. Because um, I'm representing, I leverate in Chutesbury. Who, you know, their COVID count's a lot smaller than the Amherst. And I like, I wanna see the kids back in school. And we supposed to meet last week, but the teachers decided, even though they said that they wanted it to be out open. The public did not wanna actually have it out open in the public. Cuz with two school committee members on it, it has to be an open meeting. So it has, anyone can join and see it. And the last thing is, we've talked the last two meetings about the distant learning attendance. And there are some shocking numbers as far as um, free lunch students. The number has increased up from forty-three percent last year of absences to sixty-one percent. The um, Hispanic and Latinos have jumped up to forty percent. From seventeen percent last year. And what they did was they surveyed the exact dates from nine sixteen to eleven six. Just to keep it so that it was the exact same time dates. And the same thing, the special ed and ELELL students are missing, are absent a lot more. Than in the past. And so they're trying to rectify that now by working with the family center. And work, you know, phone calls and emails and whatever they can to try and fix that. But the greatest number of absences overall is in the middle school. And they, the thought is that that's, you know, that's the first time that a lot of kids are left to be on their own. And also that middle school students tend to have younger siblings in elementary school. Or even preschool, and that, that can create a lot of havoc in the house. So that's my, that will be my report for the night.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, Union twenty-eight?
I think we can. Go ahead. No, I was gonna say, I don't have anything to add.
Um, I think, I just think that what we discussed at Union twenty-eight is much of what we have discussed here tonight. Budget, those kind of things. So I, I don't think there's anything new.
Okay. Um, so we did have our collaborative meeting last night, so I wasn't able to attend that uh, hybrid meeting. I really wanted to, to do that. But um, we just had the usual audit review. We have an A plus rating, so that was good. Review budget stuff at the collaborative. Um, they were fortunate in being able to take care of the paycheck protection program. It's just a matter of now whether that loan will be forgiven, which will be helpful if it is. We had a really good presentation on the mass migrant education program. It is something that now is housed under the Collaborative Educational Services. It was under a different collaborative in the past. Um, and this is a uh, an organization that basically tries to help migrant students. I think there's just over four hundred of them in the state of Massachusetts. And this is really to provide um, services and, and help those students find the services that they need. Uh, so migrant students can be anything from people who maybe live in one part of the state. Um, and even just by moving out to a different district. It causes a lot of chaos with, with their educational uh, systems or, or what they're doing. So um, and it was just a very interesting to hear about the program and what they do. So um, if you ever have any questions about uh, students who might fit into that um, category. There are services that they provide.
I do have, I want, I just wonder if they shared one thing. Is it because we have so much farming out here, are the numbers higher out in Western Mass than in, of, in Eastern Mass?
Actually, um, it, it varies and a lot of it is migratory. So there's a lot on the Cape. Um, but now also in this part of the, the state, a lot of the um, tobacco farms. That didn't really use as much migrant labor in the past are now using it for um, produce and stuff, which is. Uh, but, but they also have like in the Boston area, they do like a lot of meat packing. Um, there's also fishery. I mean, I was amazed. It was like, there's a whole nother world out there, you know? Um, but it's nice to know that there are services uh, for helping these students and these families. Um, it was interesting to hear sort of about the changes in uh, sort of who has been serviced by the program. It sort of seemed to be like in the past, it was more African American. And then it sort of shifted to more people from uh, South America, but it seems like even that's now changing. So um, one of the interesting statistics was talking about, in the past, it dealt with a lot of families with um, single mothers. Uh, they're finding they're getting a lot of families with single fathers, which is changing their whole sort of culture and approach. So um, again, I just thought it was fascinating and I just wanna make sure that we're aware that these services are out there. Um, we looked at our annual report and an update on the collaborative. In general, from the Executive Director. Stephen knows that I think we had a hundred and thirty-one pages to review before our meeting. Um, it's a lot. And the last thing I'll say, uh, you know, their, their, their challenges are very similar in opening up Hack Academy. As well as Mount Tom Academy, um, providing, you know, services for students, especially with special needs. Um, additionally, some of the requirements from the state has put pressure on providing educational services. For students and institutions as well as who are incarcerated. So um, lots of challenges out there all the way around. And then lastly, Bill Deal, I believe I've mentioned in the past, is retiring. Believe his last day is December thirty-first. Last night was our last meeting with Bill. Um, so that was sad. And he, we will have an interim uh, Executive Director. Her name is Karen Ruder. Uh, I was part of the committee that went through the process of hiring her. Um, she's uh, smart, articulate, compassionate, uh, empathetic, organized. She's gonna be, do a great job as interim, and we're hoping that she does apply. But we are doing an internal search, um, or the search will be internal to hire the next Executive Director. We're doing it internal because the costs for hiring outside consultants are pretty expensive. So we're hoping that that alone will save us like eighty thousand dollars. So, and I am also on that, working with um, the Human Resources Department. So that's it for the collaborative. Alright, policy review. So these require initial votes. So we need um, the second reading and first vote for. A motion for the policy on remote learning, IHBHE. Do we have a motion to accept that policy?
Uh, I move to accept IHBHE.
Okay.
In second.
Alright, and discussion? I just had a question on that. There was a sentence in there and it was regarding. I think in, in an event of an emergency and the superintendent would um. Make a declaration that she shall, or the superintendent shall get approval of the school committee, I think in a.
Yes, so that, uh, the superintendent has some administrative leeway if there was um, a need to close the schools. And then as soon as we had a meeting, or if we needed to have an emergency meeting, we'd call and get approval.
Okay, so um, you're comfortable with the wording, I think, after that, or that said something about um, reasonable timeframe? Or something like that? Okay.
Yep, if you all are, I am.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, you know, if there is a reason that you feel you need to close the school. You just need to close the school. I mean, I don't think we can wait for a posting and all of that stuff. So as long as you're fine with that, I, I am. I just wanted to make sure that you, meaning administration, had that authority to make the decision. Cuz there's not, there's no time in any of this.
So my interpretation was that I would make that call. Um, and then it would be more of an in- information session with the school committee. And an opportunity to ask questions before approval. But thank you for asking.
Anything else that anyone would like to make, comment or add or change? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Alright. Do we have a motion for immunization of students, JSLCB? Lauren?
Yeah, so moved.
Jen, you wanna second that?
Yeah, I'll second.
Excellent. Anything on that? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And Lauren, I think you were going to say something?
Yes, I was just going to say that I would move to approve uh, EBC. As policy on COVID related issues.
Now, second.
Okay. The only thing that I wondered with that, um, when it talked about students. Uh, special, special educational students or something like that. I know English language learners are sort of another category. Do you include them in that? Or did you think you would want them separate?
Uh.
It's, it was in the, I think, the beginning part of that.
Let me see. Do, you don't remember the, the bullet, do you?
It was in the paragraph sort of on the top. Let me take a look here. Sorry that, I should have had that.
No, that's okay.
It was, okay, uh. And of course, I can't see a damn thing.
I can find one with special education and local graduation requirements, which is not pertinent to us. Uh.
Hold on, see, um, I, I mean, my guess is that it's covered, but oftentimes, let's see, uh.
Is it in the students at risk, Dan? Is that what you're thinking, right?
You know what, um, we'll, we'll have another vote. I'll look at it again and I'll bring it, so it's.
Okay, cuz Students at Risk does talk about.
Right.
Um, the education of students at, at risk, which would cover really any of our most vulnerable students or with special needs.
That's exactly what I was asking, so, okay.
So I, the English learners would fall under at risk.
Okay, thank you. That's why I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's a long policy, so sorry, it took me so long to try and find it.
Well, thank you for finding it for me. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Steve, are you opposed? Okay. Alright, so with those, we'll all come back for a second vote.
Yes.
We obviously have a list of future business um, with dates. Is there anything that anyone sees there that needs to be amended or corrected?
I, I just.
The only thing is, oh, go ahead. I was gonna say budget and personnel, we don't need.
Right.
Okay.
And I wondered if there will, we had talked about the, the potential um, for the need for other meetings. And I, I don't know if we have, um. So I just wondered if we would need to meet anytime between now and December seventeenth.
Mm-hmm. Well, if Jackie thinks we need to meet for her to bring us up to speed on anything, or we certainly can.
Yeah, I don't, uh, I think December seventeenth is a good time, because I'll be able to report back on the initial uh, bring back of. Of students and also how it's going, teaching both remote and hybrid at the same time.
Perfect.
And the only other thing, Dan, we don't need a joint supervisory policy committee. Because Lauren um, and I finished the policy manual.
Yay, thank.
For the time being.
Yeah.
Yay.
Okay, so um, is there anything else that we need to discuss uh, before we uh. Roll call vote out into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or to litigation? Inviting uh, Jennifer, Jackie and Bruce.
Yeah, I don't have the link, because I, in talking with Adam, I thought it was just sort of um. Ground rules, but you can send me, if, if you send me the link, I can come. But I don't have it.
I'm happy to come, but I don't have the link.
I can send you guys the link. I can send you guys the link. I think we just got um, uh, it would be helpful to have your input.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned, and we are gonna roll call vote to go into executive session, not to come back into public uh for the purpose to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. Do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
Okay, roll call vote out. Haze I.
Malcolm Brown, aye.
Thomas Pegg, an aye.
So love an aye.
And uh that's it. And uh Jen, Malcolm Brown, you'll invite Jackie, Jen and Bruce.
Yep, I'm gonna get it over there and then I'll um, I'm gonna send the invite. Yeah, okay.
Good night, Trevor. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night, Trevor.
Rory.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Take care.
You too.
You too. Eat some turkey.